Good evening and welcome. Welcome to the April 27, 2018 meeting of the Wareham School Committee. First, could we all rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comment. Would anyone like to address the committee? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that the meeting the meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by the Recording Secretary, Mrs. Ruiz. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jessie Clements, mom of a third grader and a seventh grader. So, I, we just got back from Boston, so I didn't have a chance to like write anything, but I was really happy to see Melissa Fay present at the last meeting and I was really fortunate to have Melissa Fay at Michael's team meeting today because we had requested a time change and they were very accommodating. And so, to try to keep it short, regardless of how you vote, there's a small population of students that are, that have IEPs and they're in substantially separate situations. I would ask the school committee that if you don't know what that is, you find out. Things like extended school year are depending on how you vote, could depend like where extended school year is. So again, if you're saying you're there and you're like, "I don't know what extended school year is", please ask the questions, find out what that is. So there's a small population of students. Therapeutic Learning Center, Regular Learning Center, ASD classrooms, that the way it's been set up, at least elementary-wise in Wareham, from what I've seen is that these kiddos stay with the same teacher and therapists for two or three years. Michael was fortunate to have the same team for three years in preschool and three years at Deccus, and so now this is his first year at Minnet. He's a third grader, so I guess he'll definitely be at the middle school next year. And to have a transition, it was nerve-wracking enough to transition to a new team last year, and now one of the concerns we brought up at our meeting today is, who's his team going to be next year? And so, especially the third graders, I would just ask that you empower Melissa Fay to make the best decisions possible for those students to transition with the same team of teachers, paras, therapists, where appropriate and where possible. I think that's it. So, that's, but please ask the questions, like if you don't know what some of these terms are. And again, it's a small population I'm talking about, but those are the kids. Dr. Schwamm alluded to kids that need transitions, and so those are the kids that need it the most and just making sure. Because even for parents, you know, we want to know who are, who the team is. So regardless of how you vote, if you could really be on top of that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Wilson.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your name.
My name is Dennis Wilson, first time coming here. I am so ashamed at what you guys are doing. You're ruining kids' lives. All you care about is closing the school and trying to get an $85 million palace. You should be ashamed of yourselves. It's rotten, we're the bottom of the state for schools. You know our schools are terrible and you know this is going to be worse. And you're all doing this and you're trying to sneak an $85 million school in. This is horrible, what you school committee people are doing to these kids. You think about a third grader going to school with an eighth grader. Just think about it. Where is the common sense gone on this school committee in this town? This is horrible. It's unbelievable. Everybody I talk to, I'm working on a job in Harvard, everywhere I go and they say, "Who would do that?" I said, "Wareham School Systems. No wonder we're the worst in the state. You people should be ashamed of yourself. How are you going to dump these kids around like they're trash? I think the kids in Syria get treated better than what you people are doing." And I'm so aggravated and ashamed of you people.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jamie Pelletier. I'm a paraprofessional here at the middle school. I did send an email out to you guys all today, and I don't know if it went to your spam or whatever, but I just wanted to read what I had written. I just wanted to voice my concerns about the numbers of the, regarding the proposals of the two switchings of the schools. And I don't know if my numbers are correct, but I think they are, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Proposal one has the high school with 640 kids, grades eight through 12, and the middle school at 826 kids with pre-K in four through seven, and Deccus at 782 for K through two. Proposal two has the same for the high school and 938 students at the middle school for grades three through seven, and Deccus at 671 with pre-K in two. Are my numbers accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. I just had a different idea that I wanted to at least throw out there just for the sake of, I do work with that, a certain population that I feel sometimes gets moved around a lot and it, and I do agree with Jessie that it can be detrimental to their progress. I believe the numbers will be closer at all the schools with what I've come up with. This would leave the town with a, I think that the high school should try to go seven through 12. I'm not exactly sure of the numbers. Obviously probably I'm thinking 150 more students for grade seven. And the middle school should be like an upper elementary of three through six, and the Deccus can do pre-K through two. I don't know if this is something you've ever considered. I'm sure you went over 1,000 different ideas before you came to the two proposals you are looking at. I believe those numbers will be closer and more equitable among all three schools. The school, this would leave the town with a lower elementary school at Deccus and an upper elementary school at the now current middle school, and a middle senior high school at the current high school. I believe this would eliminate some of the parents' concerns regarding the fear of certain age groups being placed together. My thought is that older kids in the high school should be positive role models on the grades seven through nine. Students would hopefully lend to a better behavior among the grades that usually exhibit the most problems. The idea of three through six shouldn't be concerning as they are much closer in age and have been together previously. Lastly, the school with the youngest students in our districts would house the smallest numbers lending towards smaller class sizes and hopefully preparing them as they move up to the higher grades. I appreciate your time and everything you've done for our school. I know that you guys are not in an easy position and I want you to know I appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee? Okay, so there are only two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is a discussion and a vote to close Minea Forest Elementary. I guess first I would ask members of the committee if you have any questions. I mean, we've had this discussion. I'd just ask if you have any questions that you wanted to address, not to me, but to Mr. McMillan or Superintendent, does anyone?
I think we need to have Mr. McMillan down here. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
He's going to sit on the aisle.
I just, I think it's important to acknowledge that this has been a very difficult process, that none of us thought that we would be in this position. Is there no questions or comments before we go?
As I stated on Monday, it seems like it's been a lifetime ago, to be perfectly honest. It's been a long week. I'm truly not in, not in favor of this. However, if my, if our options are to close a very old, aging, and antiquated school and save jobs, then that's what I'm going to vote to do. It doesn't in any way mean that this is what I think is the best decision, but it's the best choice from the options that we're given with our budgetary restraints and class sizes. My concern is class size and my concern is saving as many jobs as we can and doing the least amount of disruption to the students who are being, who are, who do have to be moved regardless. And I just want to reiterate, you know, this is not an easy decision. This is something that has kept most of us up at night, has, you know, given us a lot of pause. We've talked to a lot of people. And truly, it's, it's not a good choice, but it's our, it's truly our only choice to save jobs and to provide the best educational environment for our kids. I have faith, as I said, that I believe the town has the best interests of students and our teachers and our, and the community. And if I have to, as I said, knock on every door to get the votes we need to, to get a new school for, for our students, then I'll do that. I don't like that we're having to make this choice ahead of a vote in favor of that, but again, in the best interest of smaller class sizes and saving jobs, then that's what I'm going to vote for.
Well, thank you for stating that so well.
And I'm just going to have to repeat what I already said, that I still have concerns about the Deccus building. As you have mentioned, that that is not in good shape either. And we're going to have children that are going to be in portables that will have to, granted, there'll be a coverway for them to walk out, but in the winter to go to the bathroom or to go to other classrooms. And then, so that's a huge concern for me, that it's not going to be a good learning environment. And so then, I again hate to go to programming, but maybe that might be the better choice in which, again, I don't like making that decision. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Basically, Ms. Pratt said everything I would like to have said. Syllable for syllable, that, thank you for that. And I would love to vote no. And I would love anyone who's going to plan on thinking on voting no to help convince me to vote no with them. But I want to hear a viable plan. If, if, if we can, if we can vote no and if there's a viable plan to do so, then I want to hear it. Otherwise, I'm going to stick with my yes vote.
Can I just make one other comment to that? Is that, so if we vote no, my suggestion would be to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out what other avenues we could. I understand that we've already done a lot of looking at it, but I think personally, just my own opinion, that there are other options.
All right, so when this first, you know, we, we came, Ms. Pratt and I came toward the tail end of this whole process.
Oh, I know.
And I, I remember when we moved the fifth grade to here, to the middle school from the, from the elementary schools, all right? And at that time, you had, you had the elementary school principals. You had Mrs. Panerisi and Mrs. Siemens, and, and they were essentially totally on board. They were practically begging for us to do this. And we did. And then, now fast forward here. And when I was attending these meetings and when it was first discussed, I didn't hear anything from the principals. And that was a big red flag for me. And I was like, "Well, the principals don't seem on board with this." Right? So then, this was before the election. And actually I had, I had a chance to tour, tour the high school with Mr. Palladino. And at that time, he had actually expressed that he would, he was really looking forward to having the eighth grade come to the high school. He's really, for a lot of academically sound reasons. And I was, I was really happy to hear that. But I didn't hear that from the elementary side. So I gave Ms. Siemens a call, and I don't want to put words in her mouth. And I said, I said, you know, I told her what I just basically said here. I said, "You know, Joan, you know, when, when this happened with the fifth grade, you know, you guys were practically begging for it, you know, but I'm not hearing anything. I'll, I'll work to move heaven and earth to keep this school open. You just need to tell me that's what you want to do." And, and essentially for her, it came down to class sizes. And like it often does for Ms. Siemens, it's, she's, she's very, very concerned about class sizes. And, and she was, she was okay. I mean, it was the lesser of two evils, obviously, but she was okay with this. And now if the principal is on board with this, then I can be on board with it. And I'm sure, I'm sure you've all received a lot of the emails that we've been receiving from the teachers. I received a bunch. I want to actually read some excerpts from one. Hold on, please. This particular email kind of, I liked it a lot because it really kind of tied together what a lot of other, of the teachers were saying in their emails. This is from Michelle LeFrençois. It actually got sent to us about an hour before the Monday meeting. Here are some excerpts. These are, these are public documents, by the way. I'm just going to skip the first paragraph and say, "My personal feelings and those of a few teachers whom I've spoken with are that saving Minnet is probably not possible, nor is it really worth repairing, or the ramifications that come with it remaining open." I taught, hold on. Reading glasses. Better. "I taught there before and it hasn't improved over time, despite our efforts. Rodents, asbestos, and other issues make teaching in that environment less than ideal. Some teachers are in fact excited to have adequate electrical outlets and technology that would be more dependable if they move, especially to the middle school. If we as a district want to recruit and maintain new teachers, this begins with their classrooms. To that, I am hopeful that if you vote for the lesser budget, the town, the quote, 'town officials whom you work with closely' will in turn support and seek a new facility hand-in-hand with us. I again thank you for all your time and efforts, but I feel it is time to move forward. We must begin to plan for the moving and the closings and give staff adequate time to make these changes, positive for the families and children of Wareham." And again, if, if, and this is, this is just what I call representative sample. I got a lot of emails like this. And I got one that, that was pretty much the opposite, I have to admit. But if, if the principal is on board with this, if, if teachers are on board with it, then I need to be on board with it.
Thank you, Mike, for sharing that email. We did, we did receive those emails and it did really help to hear how the teachers felt. Mary, I respect your opinion and I just want to say that as, because I'm on the Budget Subcommittee, I wasn't able to see the process for quite a while. And there were, every option was, that I could, you know, there were a lot of options that were explored and, you know, again, no one thought that this is where we would end up.
Can I just make one comment? So I know you were talking about, in that email, I believe it said about the, you know, how bad that Minnet was, the structurally, not any way educationally, but structurally and with, did it say mice and?
Rodents.
Rodents, yeah. I'm going to have to say, I'm pretty sure Deccus has the same problem. So I mean, that's my concern. You know, that we're just putting a Band-Aid on things and, and I'm afraid we're going to be stuck in that Band-Aid. That's all. My opinion, only my opinion.
Well, we're going to work hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
I know.
Okay, so I guess at this time, we'll call for a vote to close Minea Forest Elementary. Effective, is there a date? For the fall of 2018. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
No, 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 you're going to say it again, please.
Say the whole.
You're going to say what the whole thing is.
Yeah, whole thing is.
Well, the motion is what?
Could I have a motion to approve the closing of Minea Forest Elementary for the fall of 2018?
I can't just say so moved?
Well, because I was waiting for a motion and I wasn't typing, so I didn't have it, I'm sorry.
Okay. So moved.
Second, sorry, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Abstain? 4-1-0. So next on the agenda is the grade alignment as a result of the closing of Minnet. So, are we going to?
There are two options before you tonight. The first would be to have eighth grade to the high school, third and fourth grade to the middle school, and preschool to Deccus. The second would be eighth grade to the high school, third grade to Deccus, fourth and pre-K to Wareham Middle School. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about either option.
I was a little surprised to see that the, that the agenda was worded so specifically to be one or the other and not just, you know, grade realignment. But to Mrs. Pelletier's point, was, was that option considered at all?
Yes, it was. We looked at the seventh grade at the high school. The reason why we shied away from that, first of all, in the structure of the high school, there is no way to just segment the building and say, "This is for seventh and eighth grade." The way the building's built, it's just throughout. And because of the various rooms that are used for the various different classes, it would be very difficult to earmark a set classroom for just seventh and eighth, seventh grade.
Remind me, I don't know if you'd know this, but it's O R R, are they seventh through 12?
Yes. No, 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 you're right. They're not, they're, they're separate. Junior high, I think junior high.
Well, right, right. But the, it's a junior, it's a junior, senior high school or is it two separate schools?
No, it's two separate buildings.
All right. Because, because I was going to bring that up because actually I was there to, you know, help interview a potential replacement principal for this school. And, and I thought the way they did it was right. You know, they was really, it was truly separate, you know? And, but, but yeah, we don't have that here.
No.
To just comment on that and to Ms. Pelletier's point, I actually asked Mr. Palladino earlier this week because I was wondering the same questions and I had brought this up even prior to the election when the talk was going back and forth because I've seen junior high, junior, senior high schools work. But, you know, once, you know, I talked to Mr. Palladino this week and talked to the superintendent and kind of understood a little bit more how the structure would work as well as the sizes of the classrooms. It's not that we couldn't hold them there. I think the other concern was that the number of classrooms we have available to turn into not just eighth grade classrooms, but seventh grade classrooms, if I remember correctly. And the, the other side of this too, I, I've done a lot of reading over the last few days on, you know, what's best for grade configuration. And the entire nation is trying to figure this out. I've read so many papers, so many articles, so many lectures and interview and thesis projects. And it kind of goes back and forth. But the more and more I read, having the upper elementary/middle grades together actually seemed to benefit the, the older kids, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So I came into this, I would say, all the way through Wednesday when I, I was ready to, you know, fire at the high school principal. Why can't we do this? And then the more I started reading, I'm like, okay, this, this is making a little bit more sense. And I think we have an opportunity to do some great things. But I think we've got to, we've got to be flexible, we've got to be open-minded, we've got to look at the positive and how we can come together as a school, as a community, as parents, teachers, and students to make this work for our kids. It's not a good situation to be in, but I think we have an opportunity to do some great things with what we have and show them what we're made of in Wareham.
And I think also my understanding was when I had the conversation as well is that you have computer labs, science labs, and whatever that are located. And you can't change, I, I know that you can't change like a science lab to become a classroom, and so it makes it very difficult. So I do understand that.
I just want to, I just want to point out something also that Michael pointed out the other night, is that this lessens transitions for kids, and that's very important. And I do appreciate that we have a choice because, you know, up until recently, we only had one choice of grade configuration. And then this one, this was brought forward and I really think that will work well. So thank you.
Which I would have loved all along, to be honest, just my own opinion.
Is there a cost savings with one over the other?
No, not really. We're able to utilize staff more efficiently with the first option. So there'll be some, no, these people are looking at me like I'm, the facilities, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And a couple of parents had brought up a couple of great questions. You know, there's a great playground that was recently, you know, put at, at Minnet. Would we be able to, to move that so that, you know, everything that they put into, to building that could, could be used at maybe the upper elementary?
Yes, those are things, once a decision is made, then we'll start looking at. One of the pieces that we will, we'll have an engineer come to help us with the construction, with the move, et cetera, and with the install. Just because we know at times, we want to make sure that we've not compromised any equipment by moving. And so that will not be something that we will take on ourselves.
But there will be accommodations so that, you know, as many parents brought forth earlier this year, the kids get to play.
Good, good point.
Yeah, we will, we will be looking at that. We'll also be looking at the location for that. At one point, we talked about the inner courtyard. If that was with preschool, since preschool is not there, we would not look to put playground equipment for our older students in the, in the courtyard. But we would look at making sure that we've accommodated.
Regarding savings, I mean, I mean, you know, we always sort of focus on the school budget because we're here on the school committee, but there are tremendous savings actually, right? When it comes to the portables, if you want to mention that?
Yes, yes, I will. The first option, by moving third and fourth grade to the middle school and pre-K to Deccus, we would not need to access the funds for as many portables. Certainly would be a significant savings in borrowing to the town because we'll be able to utilize the, the classes we have at Deccus. Pre-K, right now, we're anticipating approximately five classrooms and we feel fairly comfortable that we can find a location in the building for the pre-K and move offices or other non-student-type functions to portable areas. If we can make that work, our goal is to do that. We do not want students, I know as mentioned, traveling back and forth for various reasons. So that's something that we're exploring. And, and once a decision is made, our plan is to walk the building and label every possible room. Now, we've done this many times, but you know how you go back and check and double-check and recheck, so that's really the stage that we're in. I, I would just say, this is not, not options that we ever wanted to consider, but given the fact of our resources, this is, these are options that we must consider because keeping teachers in front of students, keeping our class sizes as low as we possibly can by making this, these moves, it allows us to do just that.
Are there any other questions? Comments before we go?
I guess I do have one other question.
Sure.
And I apologize, but I know that these, as a parent, these are questions that are going through a lot of people's heads. Regardless of the option, the eighth grade is going to the high school. What does that mean for, for students as far as eighth grade graduation? mean for, for students as far as eighth grade graduation? Will they continue to have one? Will it be moved to possibly seventh grade, or just reassuring these students who've been looking forward to this, that they will still get that, that honor and that ability to?
Yes. In fact, we had that conversation this week, we would have eighth grade step up, we would continue to have the eighth grade step up time for students. The, as far as seventh grade and eighth grade, we have not discussed that yet.
I'm just trying to make sure that we get all these questions out, because I want them to, to know that we, we've gone over all of these options too. I mean, we're, we're parents, we're teachers, we're administrators, and we're going through the same troubling emotions that everyone else is, and I wanna make sure that we do all we can to ensure that their questions and their concerns are ours, and that we are under, we understand, and we're going to do the best that we can by the students and by the teachers.
The other thing that I would tell you, once a decision is made, I know that the middle school has a spaghetti dinner coming this, this upcoming week, Wednesday night, but we would certainly look at opening our doors to third grade, and high school will be opening their doors to eighth grade students and parents. We know that this is a change, it's our job to make this transition as smooth as we possibly can, and we know by opening our doors, having meetings, showing students, showing parents the facilities, that would be a high priority on our part to do.
Thank you.
Would we actually change the name from Wareham Middle School to Upper Elementary?
I think that would be a discussion for the committee to have at some point, given the fact that we're entering into a MSBA building project, you know, I, I think it would be premature for me to say, we would leave it as a middle school, or we would make the change, because there are gonna be several decisions along the way that could impact what buildings are called.
And I'd say we probably wanna hold off on that, because the whole, the whole premise of this is, this is supposed to be temporary.
Right, yeah. I hope.
That's true. Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve the grade alignment of the eighth grade going to the high school, grade three and four to Wareham Middle School, and pre-K to DeCus Elementary.
So moved. Do I have to add anything?
I wrote it this time.
All right.
I choose it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just, no, that's fine, but I'm sorry to interrupt, just, just read the, the motion again?
To move, to approve the grade alignment, and I wrote option one on your paper.
But I don't, I don't have it in front of me, that's why I'm asking.
On your agenda.
Yeah, but I don't have it in.
Eighth grade to the high school, three and four to Wareham Middle School, pre-K to DeCus Elementary.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
What is it?
Five, zero, zero, sorry. Is there any other business that was not anticipated for the meeting?
Could I just make a comment, if I may? I, I just wanna reassure parents, 'cause I know that there's gonna be a lot of parents who are concerned about their third graders, their, you know, their nine-year-olds, their ten-year-olds, but if, if you do a little research, this is working in a lot of places. Changing the ages that are at the upper elementary, middle school, whatever you'd like to call it, changes the entire vision, spirit of the school. The average age goes down. You're gonna, I, I expect really great things, to be honest, from everything that I've looked at. I think the older kids are going to be more of a role model than we anticipate, and I think it's, it's gonna be, I think it's actually gonna turn out to be something very positive. And I, I hope that we can continue to, to talk together openly. It's okay to disagree, you know, that's kind of how our society was founded, debating and figuring out what works best. But please keep your ideas coming, and remember, these kids are looking to us as to whether this is good or this is bad. This is something that, you know, we have to do right now, and I wanna make sure that we're presenting it in a positive manner to them. This is their school, they're proud of their school. That was so eloquently said by someone at one of our meetings. And I, I think with the right attitude, and with the community effort between parents, teachers, the committee, administrators, and even the students, that we can do some great things. Please come, keep coming to the meetings, keep reaching out. There's a wonderful positive movement going on in social media right now, and I think that that could actually make a huge difference.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to add one thing, third and fourth would still remain on the elementary schedule.
That's already been decided, then?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm glad you pointed that out, you did say that before, anyway. Now, a town meeting, we, we bought some new buses, how many?
Four.
Now, and I brought this, I brought this up at one of the earlier meetings, you know, way back, maybe it was a public hearing, that I, I wanna be clear, that they're all gonna have security cameras on them?
Yes, we're in the process, yes, we've purchased security cameras for our buses that we presently have, and as buses are rolled on, cameras will be added.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.